Call to order, the Royal Oak City Commission Special Meeting for June 19th, 2018. We're going to begin with public comment, just as a reminder for everyone, the same rules that we normally have at our city commission meetings apply here tonight. You have three minutes. We ask that you direct your comments to the body as a whole, not to individual commissioners. And who's first? Mr. Gomez.
Good evening. George Gomez, 2018 Guthrie Avenue in Royal Oak, Michigan. I've been a resident of Royal Oak for a little bit over 25 years now. And when I witnessed the discussion before about the budget, what it reminded me of was some of the previous years and previous administration, when it, for 20 years, we were told, "Don't worry about it. It's being taken care of. We're going to run a deficit on unpaid, you know, funds for the employees." And so, just before probably some of you got into office, we agreed as city people to pay our bill and bond well over $100 million to make up for 20 years of that. My disappointment was in listening the other day, that when we have some extra money, and it was suggested that we put our money to our pensions and, you know, unfunded things, that there seemed to be some confusion over whether that was a good idea and we had to have a discussion about it. It's extra money. It's a debt we owe. And these, and as a citizen, I will tell you sincerely, I will be so disappointed if somebody comes back to me 20 more years from now and says, "Hey, just make up for something we should have done all along." So I find it really just insulting after what we've done, that that isn't something that's taken care of. So if it's extra, and I appreciate the need for that, and I appreciate the high percentages, I appreciate all that you go through, but I will tell you, I'm so disappointed to hear that we've got $59 million possibly sitting out there, that we're not attacking sooner and quicker and better. So I just wanted to share that with you as a citizen. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Who's next?
Stephen Miller, 115 Georgetown Square, Royal Oak. As I indicated at last week's meeting, I am the former city commissioner who authored each and every financial policy that fills up page 31 of this recommended budget. I will remind all that these were and are policies to create limitations on the excesses of all commissions, especially, it seems, this current commission. Not only were the several mistakes I found to what I had authored disheartening, the fact that the most important policy, the general fund policy, was being so irresponsibly ignored. At last week's meeting, it was discussed that the 10% floor had a reasoning, but that the 25% maximum was just a percentage picked out of thin air. I assure you that this was not the case. I extrapolated out both the 10% minimum floor and the 25% maximum ceiling. And I consulted state audit officials, and I extrapolated several scenarios before making my conclusions. How further disheartening it was when last week I witnessed some commissioners tripping over themselves, trying to figure out ways to spend the $8 million that is in excess of the already budgeted policy maximum of nearly $11 million. The logical conclusion drawn is that most of you don't give a damn about the fact that these excess funds are meant, funds mean that you are grossly overtaxing Royal Oak taxpayers. Another horrible example of abusing Royal Oak taxpayers is the bait and switch you pulled a few years ago with the police and public safety millage. You misled taxpayers that you had no funds to increase public safety then, once the giant millage is passed. What happens over the last six years? You add only 17 public safety positions while using the diverted public safety millage funds to add 50 administrative positions. How on earth does that help public safety? I must also ascoriate the commission for the nearly 10 million that have been granted in no-bid contracts to what appears to be, in some instances anyway, political friends, awarding millions and millions and millions of dollars in no-bid contracts, a seemingly violation of long-established policy, to circumvent the nebulous intent of the city charter provisions, means to me, anyway, that this commission majority has lost sight of their fiduciary responsibilities to the Royal Oak taxpayers. During my college accounting and especially my auditing classes, we were warned that with municipalities, no-bid contracts leave the door open for the wasting of taxpayer dollars, opens up purchasing process to serious political corruption, potential corruption, and breaks every elected official's fiduciary responsibility. It is simply antithetical to ethical government practice. Finally, to reiterate, the giant excesses of general fund balances should be returned to the hard-working taxpayers of Royal Oak, and your practice of no-bid contracts is foolishly and, in my opinion, corruptly the antithesis of sound ethical government practices. Oh, and shame on anyone who votes to support this taxpayer-punishing budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Who's next?
Good morning. 2502 Fern Cliff. Just because you read something doesn't make it true. More specifically, the provisions contained in the fund balance financial policies that purport to require a two-thirds majority to amend them are invalid. There are numerous constraints in place that limit your actions, leaving aside judicial decisions. They reside in the federal and state constitutions, federal and state statutes, and the city's charter. A common characteristic of these documents is that they were approved by someone who isn't you. Our charter gives voters the right to replace the majority of you every two years, so that if you are not acting in a way they think best represents them, they can replace you with others who will. No commission, past, present, or future, can take away that right by adopting supermajority requirements to overturn past actions. Ironically, when initially proposed, these policies were controversial. It has not even received the approval of two-thirds of commissioners then voting. It is absurd to suggest that the two-thirds statement applies to you now. The fund balance financial policies themselves were poorly conceived from a procedural standpoint, particularly in the way they are presented to you for adoption in a typical year, where you were asked first to adopt a budget and then to reaffirm the policies all in the same meeting. When you adopt the budget, you are implicitly approving the fund balance ratios contained therein. When you reaffirm the policies, you are either taking redundant action if the budget previously approved falls within the policy limits, or taking inconsistent action if it does not. It is this latter case that is most problematic. There are specific provisions in Robert's Rules related to how you can undo something you did earlier during the same session, which for you means the same meeting. And that's where you get into the cranny and confusing mess of determining who is on the prevailing side, what a motion to reconsider is, and so forth. Best to avoid all that by not setting up in the first place. Fortunately, this year, the usual order does not apply as you do to the policies at your last meeting, so there's nothing to prevent you from adopting a budget at this meeting as indicated on the proposed agenda. In conclusion, I urge you to repeal the fund balance policies that will either be redundant or inconsistent with respect to a specific budget, or that contain the inappropriate two-thirds language, i.e., all of them except for the parking fund policy. If you feel it is useful to do so, you could readopt policies covering the same issues with more appropriate wording. For example, you could phrase them as a direction to the city manager to present a proposed budget containing fund balances satisfying certain criteria, or absent that, to include an explanation why he feels those criteria should not be met, given the current circumstances. Either way, I hope you take the time to clean this up before the 2019 budget meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Mr. Karowski.
Rick Karowski, 419 Virginia. I'm not going to redo everything that Mr. Miller said, except say ditto. I do have a question on the 31% balance. If we have this much revenue coming in over expenses, why on earth are you people even contemplating additional revenues coming into the city? I think you want to make an eight-tenths of a mill increase, administrative increase to the, to the tax, millage tax for stormwater runoff. At least have the people vote on it, number one, but if we have this kind of, this kind of revenue coming in, I think it's time we started putting some money, or using the money coming in already, to take care of some of this stuff. Ditto with the sidewalk millage. I mean, you're 6% over the maximum. My big question is, why do we need a 31%? Why do we need this much cash in reserve? What the heck is going on that the administration thinks we need this kind of cash reserve? Is it because some of the projects we're doing are already starting to increase over the projected amount of money? Like, I think the police station is already contemplating being over budget. I mean, if that's what's going on, then we maybe, maybe we need to get a different project manager in here, because we haven't even shovel, dug a hole yet. Secondly, I do want to, I do want to actually agree with Dubac on something, so you may want to call 911. We do not need to hire another full-time person in parks and rec. Most of your parks and rec costs are seasonal. However, I thought it was kind of interesting that we needed a revenue stream for, for additional people for parks and rec. But we didn't need a revenue stream for the 42 other people we put for the admin. We didn't need a revenue stream for the DDA guy that you want to hire full-time. So why is it so important to have a revenue stream for parks and rec, but not a revenue stream for all this other stuff? Finally, the, in regards to the, the, the public safety millage, I mean, it was brought, when it was originally passed, it was stated that all general fund revenues were going to fund public safety. And that was kind of reiterated when we did the, when we did the renewal. So I'd just like to know how much general revenue millage money goes to police and fire? Or does the public safety millage pay for all of it? Because there certainly seems to be a lot of money floating around that is not going to parks and rec, or, sorry, public safety, because we have a 31% overage here. And finally, I will agree with Mr. Lavassar. During good times, you want to pay down your debts. If we have an outstanding, large debt for police and fire pension and health care, it's time we started to address that. Now, apparently it wasn't addressed, it's a strategic meeting, it wasn't addressed during the budget meetings, but if you've got extra cash, you pay down your mortgage early. Thank you.
Mr. Karowski, who's next?
Good evening. Victoria Shunk, 233 East Webster Road. I happen to agree with Randy Lavassar on putting money into the pension funds for police and fire. I also wish to read you the Royal Oak mission statement. Our mission is to provide a safe and healthy, sustainable community. Since 2012, the city of Royal Oak has created 21 positions for police officers. I think that's wonderful. Thank you. Public service has added four employees. There have been 40.5 new positions filled at City Hall. The manager's office has created 3.5 positions whose salary most likely could have paid for six firefighters' hourly wages that I'm requesting to man the ambulance at Station 3. Since 2012, the fire department has had no increase in manpower. There are 55 firefighters, and of those, five employees are in the administration position. There are 16 firefighter paramedics per day. And we need six more firefighter paramedics to man the ambulance at Station 3. Despite the police and fire millage that passed in Royal Oak's mission statement, the ambulance at Station 3 is still out of service and not in parity with Station 1 and 2. The lack of an ambulance at Station 3 is not prudent for health, safety, and welfare of our citizens or the community at large. The Royal Oak Fire Department had 6,147 emergency runs in 2017, of which 3,985 were EMS runs. In a 365-day period, there were approximately 17 or more runs on any given day, equalling an emergency every one and a half hours in a 24-hour period. This is neither prudent for fast EMS runtimes nor coverage, or, coverage nor sufficient proper patient care for any emergency situation in our city, especially so when a fire occurs. The Royal Oak, our Royal Oak Fire Department has responded to 275 EMS runs in Madison Heights, Ferndale, Birmingham, and the surrounding communities, which many times has left Royal Oak without EMS services for our city. 2018 EMS runs are expected to grow greater than 2017 due to the rise in Royal Oak's population and employees who work for companies in our city. The city can no longer lean on Oakland County's mutual aid program to substitute manpower.
Ma'am, I need you to finish up your last sentence, please.
May I have extended time? There's not a lot of...
We're moved.
Mutual aid is not...
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay, you can go another minute.
Mutual aid is not designed or intended for daily EMS services. Oakland County's mutual aid program was designed for catastrophic events only. I respectfully request an amendment be made to the 2018-19 city budget to fully hire six firefighter paramedics needed to man the ambulance at Station 3. This is in total agreement with our mission statement, to provide a safe, healthy, and sustainable community for our citizens, the taxpayers who approve, who approve the firefighter millage. Have a lovely evening.
Thank you. Who's next? Anybody? Going once? Going twice? Ma'am in the back? Nothing? Okay. All right, we'll bring the meeting back up here.
Lady in the back.
Free lady in the back? All right, we'll bring the meeting back up here. That concludes public comment for this evening. That brings us to Agenda Item 3, which is the approval of the agenda. Commissioner Dubac? We have a motion by Commissioner Dubac. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion on the agenda. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. We have an agenda. This brings us to item number 4, which is the adoption of the fiscal year 2018-2019 Budget and General Appropriations Act. All right. You're probably thinking of me when you type this, Mr. Johnson. I suspect, similar to what we were going to do a week ago, we were going to go through these one by one, these particular resolutions, and vote on them, I imagine. I'm going to ask staff, is that your same intent for this evening?
Yes, sir.
And ordons to law. Okay. All right, so we have item number A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and H in front of us. Mr. Johnson, would you like to kick this off?
Okay.
Commissioner Douglas?
Did we not move to table this item from last, our last agenda, and do we not need...
Some of it, but not all of it.
I think this is what Mr. Johnson's going to...
I'll walk you through it.
Okay.
Let's begin at the beginning. General Appropriations Act, which we sometimes call Resolution 0, was approved. Resolution number 1, the actual budget resolution, failed on a 3 to 3 vote. It was not tabled. After much discussion and consultation with Coco Seaworth, our expert on Robert's Rules of Order, it's determined that we do not need a resolution to rescind the prior action, and you cannot have a resolution to reconsider. Because this particular item failed, there was no action, so you can just make the same resolution again. And that's what we would ask you to do.
To be clear on Resolution number 1.
Resolution number 1. Only Resolution number 1.
Commissioner Prush?
I'm of approval of Resolution number 1.
We have a motion by Commissioner Prush. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion? Commissioner Macy.
Yeah, so I've been hearing that I'm the reason that we are here tonight, and that people generally aren't happy about that. So I'm sorry to the staff, especially those who felt that the last-minute budget changes were some kind of an attack on their hard work. I'm sorry to my colleagues, to the extent that you felt blindsided by what I proposed last week. And finally, I'm sorry to the residents, because I didn't get done what I wanted to get done. Because I still think what I thought last week, which is, I think we should be putting more, investing more in our parks. I think we should, we should be putting more into maintenance and into the infrastructure of our parks. And I think that we are in a great financial position as a city, and that we have the money to do that. But I failed to get it done, because I need three votes at this table. So my excellent oratory convinced me, I did a really good job of that, but failed to convince three other people at this table, thanks law degree, so here we are again. So, in the meantime, because I still feel like this is the right thing to do, I've been talking to my colleagues who voted no about what I need to do to persuade them, and what they need to see in order to feel like they can vote for investing more in the parks. And it was pretty simple. They want me to follow the process, show them the money, and then show them the need. So I'm going to start with step 1 tonight. I will say I felt disheartened last week, because, again, I felt I was quite convincing. And I wasn't, I wasn't certain from the discussion at the table that I could convince the other members here, even though I felt, I felt it so strongly. But nonetheless, I'm trying, starting with, starting with Act 1. And Act 1 is to address the general fund balance issue, which has been brought up several times here tonight at public comment. So, I'm going to make a motion for the city commission to hold a work session by the end of August to review staff recommendations on our general fund balance policy and determine the optimal policy guideline...
Commissioner Macy, do you mean an amendment? Or, because we have a motion on the table right now. Do you want to do an amendment?
Yes.
For Resolution 1?
Sure.
Okay. So you want to make an amendment to go in addition to Resolution 1, to do...
Commissioner Dubac is nodding that that is what I want. Yes.
Okay.
Okay, yes, I mean, it seems like a strange amendment to do to this, but, okay. I will amend that we add on to budget resolution number 1, that we have a special work session for the city commission by the end of August to review our general fund balance policy, and perhaps based on discussion here tonight, our other budget policies, determine the optimal policy for a city of our size and risk assessment, risk portfolio, with an eye towards reevaluating our fund balance for this year, and if there is any excess, planning for that for the rest of the year.
We have an amendment offered by Commissioner Macy to Resolution 1. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion. Commissioner Lavassar.
The policies that we have in place, they serve a couple purposes. One is to make sure that we are reserving sufficient funds to address any financial hiccup that we may have due to economic reasons or other reasons. But they're also there for the protection of the taxpayers, to make sure that we are not generating revenue more so than what we need to reasonably cover our expenses. I'm not, I'm not supportive of a meeting that would seem to have the purpose of taking those protections away from our taxpayers, so I can't support this amendment.
Commissioner Dubac?
Thank you, Mayor. I very much support this amendment. I think the discussion was raised at the last meeting is very much valid, that we should reassess those limits, get a better understanding on part of this commission, and I don't believe anyone sitting at this table was here when the previous commission set those limits. We're in a very much different economy. Our city is different. Our needs are different. The risks are different. And so, understanding both the minimum threshold for fund balance and the maximum threshold for fund balance, I think it's our responsibility to the taxpayers to ensure that we all have a full understanding, we debate those limits, and then come to a conclusion as a commission as to what the appropriate level is, before moving forward with spending any excess dollars, or coming to a conclusion that we have too many dollars, which is ironic, given that in the previous public debates, some folks seemed to think that we were in dire economic straits. So I think this is a very appropriate amendment, and I'm happy to support it.
Commissioner Douglas?
I will repeat what I said at the last meeting. We spent two, three-hour special meetings as a commission in May going over the proposed budget. We had an opportunity for a special meeting, or for a third meeting, which would have been a very appropriate place to ask these sorts of questions and raise these sorts of issues, valid issues, I agree, but we didn't. And I think they are ideas that need a more thoughtful analysis, more information from our staff. Nevertheless, July 1, if we don't have a budget approved, the city shuts down. And our staff need time. The reason why we called this special meeting instead of waiting till our meeting next week is, staff needs time to implement the budget recommendations or the budget approval that we put forward here. I think it's, I think August is a reasonable time for staff to bring together information about the issues that have been raised, in terms of our fund balance, in terms of our spending priorities. I welcome that discussion. I think this is a reasonable motion, and I absolutely will support it.
Commissioner Gibbs?
I have a hard, I have a very difficult time supporting a budget that, in a sense, is overtaxing the residents. Yes, we did have the opportunity, and unfortunately, a lot of us got an education during, in the interim, from those, from the previous work sessions to now. Hindsight is 2020. But the fact of the matter is, we have these policies in place, and from the looks of the budget, we didn't follow those policies. And that's a problem. It appears, this extra money, this extra $8 or $9 million, should be going to the pensions. It should be fixing the parks, because as proud as we are of our parks, they're not in the greatest shape. And I will tell you that I live close to Berkeley, and I'll go to a Berkeley park before I go to the Royal Oak park, because it's more, it's better managed. But there's, it's a good idea, and I think we should still have that work session, but I can't support the amendment or the resolution.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'm going to be supporting the amendment 100%, because I think Commissioner Macy has made a case. I know some other commissioners up here have also made a case, and I think it's incumbent upon all of us, before we make any decisions, to really research and do our homework and allow our professional staff, who have put us in a position of financial strength over the years, the time and opportunity to advise us on the pros and cons of making a modification to a policy that, quite frankly, you know, was done a number of years ago by people that no longer sit up here. Like Commissioner Dubac said, times have changed, problems have changed, forecasts have changed. I think it's important that we do that to protect the taxpayer, because taxpayers, everyone's a taxpayer in some way or another. And to make sure that they have the city services they rely upon, police and fire, and the things that they need, we have to make sure that we are taking the time to make sure that our decisions are informed. So I wholeheartedly support this. I think the timeframe's appropriate, and I have an open mind, and certainly open ears, to see what will come out of this, this work session. And I do think it's responsible, government, and responsible to anyone who has, that's paying a dime, or has a dime with our trust, that we evaluate it very closely. And I'm just actually confused as to why that would be a problem for taxpayers, but...
Okay. All right, I'm going to, if there's no other discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor say aye on the amendment? Aye. Those opposed? Aye. Can I see a hand in the aces? Just, I'm sorry, okay, two. Okay. All right, the motion passes, so the amendment is now part of the original motion, which is for Resolution 1, which is the budget resolution from our budget. So that's still on the table. Is there any discussion about... Sorry, a lot of the word budget comes up. Resolution number 1, the budget resolution.
As amended.
As amended. Thank you. Mr. Gill.
So basically, what we're going to do with this vote is decide whether or not we move forward with the budget to keep government operations open, keep police officers on the street, firefighters, you know, picking up patients when they need help, and parks getting mowed, and all the good stuff, you know, moving forward July 1st, with the amendment, with the anticipation and the expectation that we're going to meet before August to discuss, you know, the fund balance policies. Commissioner Lavassar?
Obviously, we want to keep government running. That's important. But I have a number of concerns with, with this budget as presented, particularly because I don't believe it's fair to the taxpayers in our town. Taxpayers have been very supportive. We've, we've had a public safety millage that was enacted first in 2012, and then renewed in 2016. And we've been able to add 17 police officers as a result of that public safety millage. These are officers that we needed, and I'm glad that we have them. But the cost of those police officers is roughly $2 million per year. This tax generates about $9.5 million per year. So it's far in excess of the additional employees that we've added for public safety, which is what the voters anticipated would be used for these funds. So what have we done since we first enacted this millage? Well, we've added 42 more administrative positions. We've given $5.5 million to a developer. We're about to give away, or we've given away $3 million or so in real estate to developers. We're proceeding with a city center project that's going to cost us about $2.2 million a year for the next 20 years or so. And we're not even doing the best we can to keep costs down with this city center project. Rather than going out and taking bids for the various elements of this project, we're doing a lot of no, no-bid contracts, particularly with entities, businesses, that are politically connected. And we're not serving the taxpayers well by doing so. We're even spending $70,000 on a PR firm to, to tell the public how great this, this project is. That $70,000 that could have been used to maintain our parks, to improve our animal shelter, could have been done, used for a lot of different purposes. And we're not serving the taxpayers well by spending funds in this fashion. We've got a tax, we've got a tax surplus with this budget, anticipate about $13 million worth of surplus. Rather than give funds back to the taxpayers, this budget... Rather than give funds back to the taxpayers, this budget calls for a tax increase, a specific drain tax, which the voters are not being, being given a choice about. That's problematic, and we can expect that in the fall, we're gonna see two more taxes on the ballot, one for sidewalks, one for buses. So, even with all these additional funds that we have coming in to our coffers, we're still just not treating the taxpayers well here. I believe we have to do better for our taxpayers. They deserve a little bit more fairness. I can't support this budget, because I don't believe it's fair to the taxpayers, I don't believe it represents the priorities of the community.
Thank you, Commissioner LaVassar. Commissioner Gibbs?
We can also vote to continue the current budget, so that we can get this figured out. State of Michigan did it, all kinds of government entities have done it over the past, fairly recently. So, this is not, not voting and not approving this budget today, does not mean the world is coming to an end.
It absolutely means our world is coming to an end. If you don't vote to approve this, although it doesn't have to be today, you have one more possible meeting at which it could occur. But no, we cannot continue and operate without a budget.
We cannot continue the 2018 budget?
No, ma'am.
And why can we not?
Because the year is over. You approved a budget for the fiscal year that ends June 30th, 2018.
And that's why we would be?
And basically, those funds will, for the most part, all be expended at that point. There's not anything left.
Oh, you've got $13 million in the general fund that we can use.
It wasn't included in that budget.
The governments, all governments do this.
No, ma'am, they do not. The federal government does continuing resolutions, that's not an option available to us.
I'd like to see some authority on that.
You just got it.
Written authority.
Mr. Mates?
I'd like to see some authority that suggests we can do otherwise.
Okay. I can't find it.
Mr. Macy has the floor.
I have a question. So, I've heard a couple times about the 40 additional administrative positions. Am I correct in that 30 of those were just moved over from the district court, like we just incorporated those into our own budget?
I don't know where the count came from. I've heard different numbers here tonight, that seem to be, you know?
I've heard different numbers too, but I'll just say that when I was looking at the budget and the numbers, it appeared to me that the district court had been counted separately, and then we brought it into our own, and that was, it's more than 30 of our additional employees, was in fact, just the district court moving under our umbrella.
District Court is self-sustaining as well.
Page 37, I'll have the breakdown by function, so you can see.
Right, okay. But I'm saying, like, that at mine.
Yeah, there's 20 positions in the court, like, for instance, in 2012, 13, and there's 30 now.
Right, okay, so 10. Thank you.
Commissioner Douglas?
I would like to address this question of an additional stormwater tax. Some of our citizens may recall that this past year, we were, maybe that last year? Anyway, we were involved in a lawsuit that said that we were improperly charging households for stormwater fees, to pay our debt, portion of the debt on the George Coon Drain. Because of that, we can no longer charge people for that debt service through their water bill. We can only do it through a tax, and the law allows us to levy that tax without voter approval. So, yes, there is a small additional tax, but at the same time, people's water bills are going down. Furthermore, the city is considering, or looking at recommended language, to come up with a different and more fair way to assess stormwater funds. But for the time being, we have to pay our share of the drain costs, and this is the only vehicle that we're doing it, but in fact, it's gonna be a zero-sum game, as water bills go down, and that slight tax goes up.
And I'd just like to add to Commissioner Douglas's remarks. Royal Oak was not the only community that was faced with these sort of technical lawsuits. Ferndale, and we can name a couple others that are on the Coon Drain system. So, we resolved ours to, with satisfaction, and we had, part of the settlement was to move forward, just as Commissioner Douglas stated. So, it was a pass-through through the county. Any other discussion? Yeah, I'm just gonna add that, and I'll, I'll say it completely bluntly, it is a complete dereliction of duty not to vote for a budget to keep the city opening and running. Where there are things in the budget during the planning sessions, that I had questions that I wanted, that quite frankly, didn't get incorporated into the budget, I'm still gonna work towards those ends with my fellow commissioners, and if they see fit, or at least if three others see fit, we'll get those as budget amendments moving forward. But in no way will I shut down city operations with a no vote, moving forward. I think that we, I mean, I guess I'm just miffed how one can disagree with a strategy, or can disagree with certain line items, but is willing to burn the whole church down for the sake of a few elements. The things that I heard as reasons, as presented by one of our commissioners, to me is nothing more than intellectual dishonesty in a lot of cases. I hear the same campaign rant over and over again at this table, and it's starting to become very frustrating. We're not on the campaign trail anymore. We are governing the lives and well-being of 60,000 people in this community. And we cannot take that responsibility lightly, and we cannot shirk that responsibility. So, let's be clear. A no vote on this budget is a vote to shut the city down, and that's exactly what it is, and that's all I have to say.
Commissioner Prush?
Since I'm still, like, on European time, it's taken me a little bit of time to kinda catch my breath here, and I have only heard bits and pieces of some of the issues that were batted around last week, so I just have a couple of thoughts. First of all, I will agree with Commissioner Douglas, that it's unfortunate that a lot of these issues came up at the last moment. No good policy, no good fiscal policy, no good government policy ever, ever, ever comes out of ambush politics, and that's exactly what happened last week. And that's what is continuing this week, apparently. New ideas, new proposals, the incredulous, incredulous suggestion that we don't approve a budget in time for the January, for the July 1 deadline is, at best naive. Under state law, it simply cannot happen. Local governments, city governments, under the Home Rule Act, cannot act, continue to function without a budget in place. The second thing that's discouraging is that it's real clear that a number of the issues that motivated people to get involved last year in the election are still continuing. It's not surprising, but it's just discouraging that every time we have a major fundamental issue in front of us, like the budget, that those kinda get regurgitated again and again and again. And it doesn't do anybody any good to see that those aren't really advanced in any way, they're just kinda repeated over and over again. The authorized full-time positions that are in the budget are just a couple of more than what were last year. We've got a gradual increase primarily in the district court, we're not seeing a gradual, we're not seeing a major significant increase. I think last year, we added two positions, one in building inspection and one someplace else, I can't remember where. But the idea that we have all these extra employees running around is, is not accurate. So, that said, I think unfortunately, we're getting the fiscal year off to a pretty crummy start. But we will approve this project tonight, we will move forward and get the things done that we need to get done, and I will get home eventually, so that I can take a nap.
Thank you, Commissioner Prush. Any other discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Can I see the hands of the nays? Okay. Thank you. Motion passes. Ladies and gentlemen, because of five of us up here, we'll be able to continue city operations, beginning July 1 of this year. All right. Mr. Johnson, can you help walk us through the next set of resolutions?
Resolutions 2 through 8 were tabled. Resolution 9 was actually approved. So, resolutions 2 through 8 need to be, we need a motion to remove them from the table.
Commissioner Macy?
I move, we, I move, we move, resolutions 2 through 8 from the table.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Macy, seconded by Commissioner Dubbuck. Discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Resolution number 2 sets the tax rate. And it goes through all the components of it.
Commissioner Prush?
I'm of approval of Resolution number 2.
Motion by Commissioner Prush. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Pacey. Okay, discussion? Commissioner LaVassar?
Again, I cannot support this, because it increases taxes at a time when we have a very, very significant general fund balance, specifically the drain tax. The expenditures that would be covered by this drain tax for this one year certainly could be paid for out of the general fund, without the need to increase taxes on our residents. I do understand that Mr. Johnson is hoping for a long-term solution that would be other than this tax, but I certainly believe for this one year, we don't need to raise taxes on our residents.
Any other discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Resolution passes, we will have revenue to continue operating the city. Okay. All right. Resolution number 3, Mr. Johnson?
Resolution 3 authorizes the 1% tax administration fee.
Commissioner Prush?
I'm of approval of Resolution number 3.
We have a motion by Commissioner Prush, seconded by Commissioner Dubbuck. Okay, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Resolution 4 sets the water and sewage disposal rates.
Commissioner Douglas?
Move approval of Resolution 4.
We have a motion by Commissioner Douglas, seconded by Commissioner Prush. With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Resolution 5 deals with purchases, specifically, what it does, it allows orders to be placed and payments to be made for certain expenditures that are provided by natural or regulated monopolies, or other sole-source providers, in order to operate the city, without going through a bid process.
Commissioner Douglas?
Move approval of Resolution 5.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, seconded by Commissioner Prush. Discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Resolution 6 sets the dollar amounts for when approval needs to be made on a purchase by the commission, and when things need to be bid.
Okay. Commissioner Dubbuck?
Moved.
Motion by Commissioner Dubbuck. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Resolution number 7 relates to a provision in Act 51 of 1951 of Michigan compiled laws that allows 25%, up to 25% of major street fund monies to be transferred to the local street fund. We pass this resolution every year, whether we actually do that or not.
Commissioner Douglas?
Move approval of Resolution 7.
We have a motion by Commissioner Douglas, seconded by Commissioner Macy. Discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Resolution 8 deals with PEG fees. That stands for Public Education in Government, and it's how we fund WROK, but also, we give one-half of the 1% PEG fee to Community Media Network, because we're part of a consortium, and Community Media provides services to the entire consortium. So, this resolution authorizes the city to grant Community Media Network one-half of 1% of the, of the PEG, one-half of the 1% PEG fee.
Commissioner Douglas?
Move approval?
We have a motion by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Resolution number 9 was approved at the previous meeting, so we are done, as far as the resolutions to adopt the budget.
So, if there's no other business for the, for the city, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Dubbuck?
Thank you, Mayor. Having done our duty for the residents this evening, I'll move to adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner Dubbuck, seconded by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. We're adjourned.